... time here. I'd like to welcome everyone here this afternoon. On September the 13th, for our Lancaster County Council Committee, the whole meeting. And we'll go ahead and get started with Councilmember Brian Corns' allegiance and our pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this day that you have given to us. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of Lancaster County, give us wisdom and guidance as we go through this meeting, be with us as we go home, keep us safe, and help us to serve you. For so in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion for Ms. McGriff to have a second.
Second.
Second. For Mr. Graham, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. Let's move down to our citizens' comments. No one signed up, but we have five electronic comments. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did receive five electronic comments. You all have hard copies. Each council member has hard copies at their seat. The first one was from Carla Rivas Plata, 1911 Sandal Brook Road in Indianland. She wrote in regarding the need for regulations that control overpopulation and make neutering and spaying mandatory for those unlicensed to breed and to evaluate who will be allowed to be a breeder. The second one was from Ashley Cafaro, 1,000 Forest Oak Drive, regarding the need for harsher punishments for animal abuse and neglect, and the need for the shelter to be open for adoptions on the weekends. The third one was from Amy Loudermilk, 2004 Hunters Ridge Road in Lancaster, regarding the need to fully fund the spay and neuter programs and to crack down on backyard breeding. The fourth one was from Crystal A., no address given. She stated that in order to avoid animals at the shelter being euthanized, she asked that the county not waive the adoption fees for each time the shelter gets at capacity, and to use some of the road tax money to help fund the shelter. The fifth one was from Terry Henson at 846 Hilldale Drive in Lancaster, South Carolina. She is requesting to make secondary road S-293761 or Hilldale Drive designated as a "know-through trucks" road, and to add the installation of speed bumps. And in the email, they elaborated on why they were making that request. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Simpson. All right, let's move on down to our discussion and action items. I hope we'll be finished before 6 o'clock tonight. Our Unified Development Ordinance UDO update discussion from Ms. Davis. Go ahead, Ashley.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. So we are reaching a point in our UDO drafting that essentially we need to give some direction to our UDO consultants on how we would like to see multi-use development projects proceed forward. So there's kind of three viable options that have been identified, two that are kind of the primary options we feel we would see most often. But I've got a quick presentation. I'll run through just the background of mixed use and then the three different options. Stop me if you have any questions. So currently, I think you all know, we have a form-based mixed-use district. It's proven challenging for both staff and developers. So we want to look at how to do that better in the new UDO. So we'll talk about form-based mixed-use a little later as well. In the 1998 UDO, we actually did have planned development districts. I'm sure you guys are all aware of those. But one of the reasons we want to see mixed-use developments come in is they have the potential to create dynamic kind of walkable environments, reduce auto-dependency. Once people get to those sites, a lot of times they kind of stay on those sites. Or, for example, I lived in Riverwalk at one point and was able to walk from my apartment up to Lidl, pick up something for dinner, come back, not have to get on any of the major roads in Rock Hill. So as a local example of this type of development, you've got Riverwalk, a lot of the commercial development you see up front, as well as the apartments, townhomes, single-family in the back, fair amount of recreation. They also have a large industrial area. A smaller example, so something that we could see potentially, even though Indianland's getting to a point where it's building out, or having less large-scale, thousand-acre development areas available, we still do have a fair amount of space. And you can still do a creative mixed-use project at a smaller scale. This is in... Bridgeway Station is a project in Malden, South Carolina, so just outside of Greenville. It's about 80 acres. Still a fair amount of office, retail, residential, good walkable space. They're actually going to work with the city a little bit, too, for some institutional space. So in discussions with our consultants and some research staffs done, there's kind of what we see is three viable options to move forward with mixed-use. We have the form-based mixed-use, which again is kind of what we have now, planned developments, or flex slash master plan type districts. So from a form-based standpoint, it is what we currently have. Generally, form-based is designed for more dense environments. It's typically very, very specific. It's an area that knows exactly what they want their buildings to look like, designs all the buildings to kind of look the same, focuses more on the design of buildings than the actual use of the building. So a lot of times you'll have an industrial site that doesn't necessarily look like an industrial site, but that presents some challenges for the actual users of the building. So national examples of where this code is used, just to give you an idea of what you're looking at, City of Buffalo, Town of Fort Myers, City of Flagstaff, Las Vegas, Miami are some of the well-known groups that use this. Another challenge that we're seeing is that mixed-use, because we only have mixed-use in our mixed-use districts, or we only use form-based code in our mixed-use districts, it's creating kind of a problem between the style of buildings that we have coming in. So if you talk to a lot of developers, they'll tell you that you're forcing me to build a style that doesn't make sense in this type of an area, because again, the criteria is relatively stringent. So the page you see on the left-hand side is from our UDO, requirements for transparency, things like that. Again, they work a lot of times in urban, walkable environments, but not necessarily at a county-wide scale very often. So in South Carolina, Beaufort County is the only county that we could determine using form-based code. They are using form-based for their entire Unified Development Ordinance note, though, not just specific areas. City of Columbia and the Town of Hilton Head both use form-based code within certain planned development districts, but not widely. Planned development districts are much more common in the state of South Carolina. Part of that is because they're specifically called out in the South Carolina Planning and Enabling Act. The two longer bullets here, which are also in your packets, are almost copied and pasted word-for-word from that section of the statute. But essentially, planned development districts are designed to allow some flexibility in developments to try and get a better, more innovative product. They can be crafted to specific standards set by the jurisdiction. They do require a fair amount of involvement from staff, planning, commission, and council, but it involves you in that process pretty early on. So on the screen is a map. We did a little bit of digging. Everything you see in pink is a county that currently has planned development districts, PDDs, PUDs, some version of a planned development district in their code. The blue is our counties that are using a master plan type district. Beaufort County, again, we use form-based code down there. From a flexible master plan district, you saw a very complex version of it a while back, maybe beginning of last year. It would be probably a much scaled-down version of what you saw. I think that was a 60-page ordinance in and of itself. It would be scaled down substantially from that, because we would have a code that would dictate a lot of the landscape and design standards in other areas. But it's very similar to PDDs. The main difference between a flexible master plan district or a PDD is that a flexible master plan district, you could set it up and have flex mixed-use, flex residential, and flex commercial, whereas a PDD, you would have, you would be required by state code to have a mix of uses. So you couldn't do just flexible residential. We did discuss this with Planning Commission at the last workshop. Their recommendation is to go down the PDD path. Both PDDs and the master plan districts could be crafted how we want to craft them. So you could see these again, or will see these again, whichever path we go down. But we could craft some more stringent standards. I know we had issues with PDDs in the past. There's ways, under South Carolina state code and in crafting our own legislation that we could, or regulations, we could kind of crack down on the issues that we saw. So talking about different required ratios, perhaps we want a 20% ratio of you have to have 20% of commercial to be able to get X amount of residential. Build-out ratios, you could have a requirement where if you get to a point where you've built 50% of your residential and you haven't built any of your commercial, which is something that we've seen in a lot of our PDDs, we stop issuing building permits until you get your commercial up and running. So we can craft all of that in the regulation that we come up with and set for ourselves. We can do it at a wide scale and create just general guidance, and we can do it at a site-by-site scale as well. So those are the key differences there between flexible master plan, PDD, and form-based. Here with any questions, we also have some representatives from the Planning Commission if you have questions for them
I'll say something. We definitely got to, we need to change the form-based zoning. You need to... It's not...
Mixed-use.
I don't think it's something we want to pursue. If we go back to PDDs, we can do development agreements, right?
Why do...
What about with the third option?
You can also do development agreements with flex. You can make it a requirement of any flex district. And again, the specific standards that you would want to see build out, we can discuss further down the road. We just kind of need to know which direction to send the...
Will we still have traditional zoning districts?
Yes, sir. Yes, you would have...
You'll still have a R-15, but this would be for the corridor, like 521, around town?
Yes, sir. Arguably, you could use them wherever you saw fit, but all of these, we wouldn't prezone anything to any of these districts. Every one of these would have to come before you and be approved at the site plan phase. And again, a lot of these are going to require a fair amount of involvement from council on the front end, and that being if people come in and they want flexibility on certain things, we're just going to have to determine what you guys are willing to give flexibility on, what you're not willing to give flexibility on. And we can write that into the code, or we can do that on a site-by-site basis for either form-based, or for either flexible master plan districts or for PDDs.
Hey, Steve, why did we move away from PDDs? Can you...
2016.
2016, and what was the justification behind that?
We, there was some unintended consequences when we did PDDs that they didn't realize at townhomes and all could count as commercial. So you've got all those PDDs in Indianland where they thought there was going to be commercial out front that you got...
And not.
You got townhomes built on or apartments.
Yeah, I got a...
Like an easy cure there.
Yeah, I think it is.
A couple of questions. One, is there going to be a minimum acreage for these?
So you could set that minimum acreage and/or maximum acreage if you went, if you were to pursue either the flex option or the PDD options. We would craft that language how you guys saw fit. So if you said 25 acres is still not enough to really get a flexible mixed-use, a good mixed-use project out of it, you could set the minimum acreage at 80 acres, 100 acres.
And the other issue, one of the issues I had with PDDs is that they seem to have no time limit. So would there be a time limit on these? I mean, they set the zoning requirements, everything in the PDDs, and they're way behind.
So a lot of it depends on how you craft your ordinances and how you craft the development agreement that goes with the ordinances. There are some places that have implemented sunset requirements, so if you don't build out by, or don't show significant improvement by X date, then you revert back to your original zoning. So that's something that we could look into if that was a path that we wanted to go down, or we wanted to just put a limit on your development agreement length. But generally, PDDs at a larger level will take a little bit longer to build out. They probably shouldn't take 40 years to build out, but...
These require rezoning requests to be, I mean, it would be zone, general, commercial to start with, or whatever. And then if somebody wanted the additional density or whatever, they would request flexible?
Yes, sir. So everything in PDD or the master plan districts would be bound to a site plan. So we would have the site plans. It would be a relatively substantial first packet to you all, so it wouldn't be too dissimilar from the mixed-use packets you get now with your TIA has already completed, a site plan, a very specific site plan already included. But it would just allow a little bit of...
When you say "specific site plan," you're not talking about a concept plan?
No, sir.
So they have to do what it says?
Yes, sir. So we would want very specific site plans. There is a balance that you kind of need to strike there, though, because if you're trying to talk about doing a review for a master plan district or a PDD, and you're starting to look at parking stalls and things that are already included, if you're looking at it at 1,000 acres, that's maybe a little too detailed. But then if you're talking about where they're going to place their buildings, how they're going to organize, how many units they get, so on and so forth, they would be bound to a specific site plan.
I would say based on our performance with the current zoning, that's something that we don't want to pursue. So definitely, the PDD, which we are all, for the most part, more familiar with, but if we could tighten up some of those regulations on when you've got to do your commercial part, and when you've, you know, you've got to start development and things like that, because the biggest issue we had were dormant PDDs that came back to life, and their zoning were out of the 1990s.
That's right.
And, you know, that would be the biggest issue, is making sure that we could keep zoning standards up to date.
I think the state mandated that they extend a lot of those PDDs, hadn't they? Were some of them running out?
Yes. So in 2008, the state...
Vesting them.
Yeah, well, it's not really a vesting, but they extended the rights for a little longer based off of the economic downturn. So I think they got about five years.
Being a little bit too much detail, but I'm going to tell you, the parking is important, because if you don't plan enough parking, whatever you do is going to look junky when people are jumping up on curves, parking, locking out ambulances, blocking out fire trucks. So, I mean, to me, parking is an integral part of any development.
It's very important. The problem we're seeing with some of the mixed-use developments right now is that we've regulated parking in a master plan, and then we're finding out that the retail is not in fact all retail. It's going to have some office space, or it's going to have some restaurant space. And so a lot of times at the master plan level, the developer doesn't necessarily know exactly what's going to go in every unit. So it's just creating a little bit of a challenge, because they feel like they're bound to their master plans, and we're trying to figure out how to manage that expectation.
I agree with what some of them said about the commercial part of it. You know, you get so far along in it, you know, your commercial part's got to be started. A lot of times, and I think Walnut Creek, that some 521 out there...
You'll have...
That's supposed to be commercial, and it still ain't built out. And I don't know that it ever will be, but whatever we do, we've got to put some teeth into it to where we can make them do it, and they're not just lingering like that is up there. I mean, I don't know that that'll ever get better. I think they come back for us a while back wanting to put more townhomes or something on it, and we turned it down. But we don't need that kind of stuff, you know, in this. I think we do need to put some stuff. Y'all got some guidelines from the Gobain, and they hold their end of it.
Yes, sir. So that's something that we heard from Planning Commission, as well, is putting some ratios in place. So that, again, if, a lot of times you will see the residential come first, because they want that residential density in place and some of those units in place to help support some of the commercial that's coming in. But putting in ratios, like I said, phasing your development, saying you can get through this first phase and not have to build your commercial, but once you get past Phase 1, or this certain percentage of homes, then you have to have some commercial come in. And we can craft that language in the PDDs or the flex districts.
You know, I like the fact that if we go back to PDDs and be specific in what we're asking, because we've been down that road with PDDs, and it got out of hand, and we get away with it and didn't like it, because we didn't, it was not specific enough. So...
Yeah, so I think you can craft specific language, and in fact, most places have crafted specific language. Again, Charleston County has a PDD ordinance, and it's relatively specific in what they're looking for in some things. So that map on the screen shows you a lot, but there's a lot of places that we can pull some ideas from, and we also have a good team in White and Smith working on the project that has experience in other places as well.
So the current MX districts, are we just going to convert them to this, or what are we going to do with the current MX districts?
So I think that might be something we would have to kind of get into as far as the legal vestings and things, but the exchange, for example, is an MX district that has a development agreement and is probably going to be developed as that MX district. I think you would just probably not see MX carryover into the new ordinance as a usable district.
Yeah, but I'm thinking of land that's zoned MX that's not developed currently.
There's not many. I can think of maybe five. I believe there's two on Dobie's Bridge, one on Harrisburg Road. So there's a couple that are still out there, but there's not many that are vacant MX parcels. But we could potentially rezone those if you all saw fit, but that would be something that we would need to get into from the legal perspective and just make sure we weren't putting ourselves in a taking situation.
Yeah, I think there's one behind the high school that's MX. It's a pretty good size.
There's two off of Dobie's Bridge that are really more behind the elementary school, but yes, sir.
More comments?
All I've heard is PDDs is what everybody seems to...
Well, that's what I was going to clarify, because we're going to go back to the consultants. Ashley's going to say, hey, we talked to council, and you want to explore more along the PDD route, is what the feedback we're hearing to give to the consultants.
There was something else that Ms. McGriff reminded me of, was that the PDDs had the different rules, and the administration had a hard time keeping track of all these different PDDs. Is that going to be true for the new PDDs?
So the PDDs would still, based off of just the nature of the flexibility and things, they would have their own kind of ordinances associated with them. But the goal would be for those ordinances to be very clear and specific and not to have many, many, many amendments. That's been, at least in my experience, that's been more of the challenge, is keeping up with. The original ordinance is pretty easy to find, and it's bound to a site plan, and that is a workable document, and that's not so much of an issue. But when we have, I believe Walnut Creek, I think had at least 10 different amendments that happened that we had to track down every amendment. So I think with it being a shorter timeframe and us trying to put timeframes in place, hopefully we won't see as many of those amendments and just creating stricter guidelines on the front end.
On a PDD, can, can we lock them in on a development plan, or, because the Upper Glen Van Wijk rules to issue right there where they did the two projects, they changed, they rezoned that corner?
Yeah, they redid it, and there was a, there was a concept plan, and they didn't do it.
Build a concept plan?
No, they didn't. And one of the concepts was to put another road behind the library, and that didn't happen.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we, that we don't let that kind of stuff happen.
Well, I think that was on us, the road. We let them put it up there like they did.
I understand, but that's not, that's not...
You need to be more attentive.
And I think the entrances were different on the concept plan.
Ms. McGriff, we were given to limited information, and we made our vote on limited information, but that was just a bad overall...
But how will we know in the future that it's not limited information?
We got, staff's got to give us better detailed information.
That's why you hear me not be kind about concept plans, because they change. And so if you're talking about a site-specific one, and I understand you may have to change a little bit, but the overall concept should not change.
Yes, sir. I think that's been something that, from both the staff standpoint and from Planning Commission and from council, that we're all on the same page there, that you have to have a little bit of flexibility based on who, market conditions, who's coming into certain areas. But that generally, the concept and the master plan should stay the same. I think we would probably do something along the lines of allowing amendments, but allowing amendments at a different, in a different format. So a lot of the old PDDs allowed free transfer of development based off of what the developer saw fit for that area. So a lot of things just kind of, the commercial area got ticked down and ticked down and ticked down. So I just scrolled back to this example, but Bridgeway Station, the upper picture you see there is a part of their concept plan, was part of their concept plan in the middle. The lower picture is what you see is actively being built, and they are building nearly exactly what was in the requirements, because they put that into the development agreement. So there are ways to structure your development agreements and structure your ordinances, so you get kind of exactly what you're asking for. We just have to have the forethought and interest in the front end.
Like Mr. Blackman says, it all comes down to getting the correct information.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Davis, any more discussion on this? We'll move down and let Ms. start discussing discussion of new text amendments until finalization of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Yeah, so there has been a concern from Planning Commission and from staff on the number of text amendments that we're seeing coming in to the current UDO, knowing that we're writing a new UDO. So I believe Chairman Dees wanted to speak to you all regarding Planning Commission's concerns. I will pass it over to him, but I will be here for any
Good to have you here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the record, my name is Charles Dees. I live in 404 South Potter Road, Lancaster. I'm a council member from... I'm a council member from District Three and I was asked to speak to you this afternoon by the Planning Commission as a whole. On August the 15th, at our meeting, the Planning Commission held a fairly lengthy and I feel like a necessary discussion concerning the number of text amendments that's being received on a regular basis by the planning staff. Some people may not realize how understaffed our planning department is. Right now with Ashley up here, there's only one down there, if he's still there. We have three members and a director, one being the clerk to the Planning Commission and the administrative assistant to the planners, all two of them. A text amendment coming to the Planning Commission's staff, and I do call them our staff because they work closely with us, considerable. You would not believe the amount of time it takes to research the UDO for a text amendment. Not only held in Chapter Two, but you may find parts of it in Chapter Five or Seven or Ten. So they spend a considerable amount of their time researching the text amendment before they can bring it to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, of course, hears it, thanks them for their effort. We have to hold a public hearing on the matter and vote and recommend either denial or approval of the county council and send it on to you. At about May 10th, I think of 2021, county entered into an agreement, a contract with White and Smith to do a total assessment of the existing UDO at the time, after which that assessment reverted to a contract to rewrite the entire Unified Development Ordinance in Lancaster County. Since then, there have been approximately 24 text amendments. We are in essence rewriting it for them, but we're paying them to do it. Every time we change a text amendment, we change something in that UDO that they've got to go back and research and change in their book. So after that discussion, a commissioner, and I don't mind naming people, Commissioner James Barnett made a motion, he represents District Five, that council be requested and a recommendation be made to them, that a moratorium be placed on all text amendments coming to the planning staff until the rewrite of the UDO is complete and approved by county And that recommendation comes also with my request that this be heard at your earliest convenience. Thank you. I'm open for a question if you have.
Go ahead, Ms. Murray.
Can we get a legal statement on where we are at legally? Can we do that legally or what can we do, Jenny?
That's a question that was asked in the planning staff, but we did not have legal representatives, so I couldn't answer.
So that's kind of a touchy situation, Councilmember McGriff. Certainly if you're going to a full-blown, no more text amendments, there could be some problems with developers who could claim you are stopping what they are trying to do and growing their, doing what they need to with their property or so forth, but there are ways that we can discuss handling this request from the Planning Commission.
Do we say slow down and not stop?
Yes, ma'am, that would probably be better than the word stop because stopping would require a lot of things that would have to go to health, safety, so forth and on. You'd have to have a lot of findings to do that completely. Yes, ma'am.
If council will remember one thing.
No, I was just going to say be very specific in the ones that we look at, what I mean by slowing down, a necessary change of text amendment.
I know of one that is moving, that is moving forward, the owner is calling me about three or four weeks ago and has started the process, talking to Dennis and planting, and she is going to have to do the amendment herself to present it, but this is, if it passes, it would, could be a possible benefit to.
I think as you.
What I can say or.
Sure that there are.
The generalities is there are, I mean, text amendments can be citizen business initiated. Some of them are planning staff initiated. What we've seen, I think lately is some of the changes that we've done were council initiated. When you talk about the indoor cul-de-sacs or indoor roads and different things, and so some of them seem to be time sensitive based upon some citizen particular issues. So I think as you've done with developments, you all have sent a message on whether or not you're going to approve developments going forward, and I think that that's had a message across the community about how you've voted down some recent rezonings and different things. I think you can send the same message with text amendments. If you say some of these aren't the ones you're really interested in unless they're business focused or have a broader appeal or impact, I think you can just send messages one by one until we get the UDO.
I mean, that's kind of what we did Monday night and said, hey, this is a text amendment and we're having a rewrite for the UDO and maybe we ought not to pass this particular one because of the UDO. I mean, I just think that that's probably the easiest path for us to take.
Then you still got staff doing all the research leading up to getting it to Planning Commission, getting it to us to say no.
Yeah, but I think a message would get out pretty soon, just I assume it's the same thing's happening with some of the rezoning requests or development requests in them. It's basically, well, northern number five we have because we can't stand it anymore.
So I have a question. So if we passed something that said, let's stop these text amendments, even if we go as far to say stop, could we, let's say the following month, reverse course and change that?
Absolutely.
So it really makes no difference because if somebody were to tell us that they wanted to do something anyway and someone on this day has decided, well, let's test it out, let's see if we can do this, they could still pass that. So what's the point of doing anything right now if we can change it at a later date anyway?
Well, I think the point would be that planning staff would take your direction and say that we would discourage based upon council vote. If someone still wants to come forward and file the application for the text amendment, planning staff would still have to process that.
But to your point earlier, if we have just sent that message saying, if you do send a text amendment, the likelihood is that it is not going to pass. And then that in itself becomes the behavior that gets modified because when they come up, we then deny them as opposed to trying to pass some sort of moratorium or stopping it, we just actually do what we say we're going to do. I mean, why don't we try that?
I imagine if you look back over the last five to 10 years, the majority of text amendments are initiated by council or staff.
That is true.
The only ones I've ever saw initiated by the public, I guess, this year.
That's my point.
And I think that's.
I think we've got to make a decision on, define what we will accept as a change in a text amendment. I mean, if it's critical to whatever cause, not stop it, but it's got to be critical to the growth of whatever of the county. All of them are not critical. Some can wait, you know?
You've got three waiting on you now.
I think if we do what we say we're going to do, the behavior will change.
Well, I can tell you from the administrator.
And I'm talking about our behavior to confirm councilwoman's.
From this conversation, we will certainly have much more in-depth conversation within staff about any staff initiated text amendments coming forward, certainly if you have applicant-initiated requests and.
Legitimate one involves my district.
That's your opinion.
No, I mean, it would be the opinion of.
Not my opinion.
It would be a benefit to the county because it would offer a service that now is over 30 miles away.
That'll be a decision of council to even.
To look at it.
Move forward with that.
We have to hear the Pacifics before we can comment on it.
I want to make one more comment too. As we move forward to this UDO, one thing I think we all agreed upon, we did not want a big book handed to us at one time and say, okay, time to approve it. Text amendments are a chance to start giving direction to the new UDO. So I just, somewhere along the way, we've got to settle some issues before we get to that big, thick book.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that the discussion on Monday night about that text amendment would give whoever's writing the UDO feedback and heard some concerns we had about that particular issue, so that there is some merit to that.
So just to speak to one point, there is a bit of concern with using text amendments as a way to potentially put something into the new UDO. If you have things you would like to see in the new UDO, certainly give some staff, give staff guidance as we're going through the rewrite. But our contract with White and Smith essentially was to develop the UDO based on the issues that were in the UDO when they, when we signed the contract. They're not reviewing our text amendments, so essentially our text amendments are being things that we then pass on from staff to the consultants as something that we would like to see in the new UDO or see how it functions in the new UDO. Now, there's a lot of the new UDO that's just going to be entirely restructured, so trying to pull things from tweaking the current UDO or changing the current UDO may not even necessarily be applicable to the new UDO. So hesitant when we talk about using text amendments as a route to give direction. We can certainly give direction, but it may not be, text amendments may not be their best route.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. 442, we move in right along. Airport Terminal and Lighting Vault project update, Mr. Mars.
Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, I am pleased to highlight that just this afternoon, we fully executed and received the copyback of the 2.292 million federal grant for the airport terminal project. So that deal has been finalized and executed and the money's been fully identified. So as we've talked, we last came back to you in January, a little bit of conversation in March, but giving you the project update, we're going to go through that again where we are now with the project, the contract's been signed, but highlight the new funding arrangement now that we know the federal funds and walk through the project with you. So Mr. Ken Holtz here, we have a handout in front of you that will give you the timeline where we're at, and we're actually at the point now for notice to proceed, but want to make sure you understand we still have some financing information that probably won't be finalized until November in terms of additional state funds for more revenue, but we also do have a request, given the year it's been with the contract signed, but no activity, a request for some cost escalations over the past year. So we're going to talk about that as well. So I'd like to invite Mr. Ken Holtz forward and we'll go through the presentation. And I also, let me highlight, Mr. Holtz has been the one who's been working tirelessly on our FAA grant, making sure that everything we are qualified for to the penny and to the specific design has been very strong for us, but also being able to now go back and potentially obtain additional state funding for this project. So I want to thank him for his efforts as we talk about funding for this. Thank you, Ken.
My pleasure. Mr. Chairman, members of council, let's see if I can get this presentation going. As you can see up there, since February of 2022, we've had the pleasure of presenting information and updates to this body and today we have the same pleasure, so we appreciate this opportunity. So what I thought I would do is first talk about the ATP, which is what Mr. Marsstall was referring to, that we now today have that grant in place. So in March of 2022, we submitted the necessary form to compete for that funding. It was highly competitive. I think they had over 600 applications, the total $15 billion and their budget was just been $1 billion. So we were hopeful, but we realized that we had a lot of competition. And on July the 7th, we got the unfortunate news that our project was not selected. Those two dates are critical because this was part of our overall plan in terms of getting the contractor on board when we bid the project, which I'm going to cover in just a minute. But to complete my recap of the airport terminal program and the bipartisan infrastructure law, after we were notified that we were not successful, I had some discussions with the FAA to find out when their next NOFO or Notice of Funding opportunity was expected because that, those are where the instructions are to submit a grant, to submit that 5144 form. They indicated it would be in October. So I thought what I would do is schedule a debrief with the FAA in Atlanta and to make sure we could get information or feedback from our earlier submitted, see how we could improve it, how we can improve our chances. That ended up, some really valuable information came out of that debrief and then the NOFO did come out as a Notice of Funding opportunity. October 21st, we submitted again a revised 5144 and there were over 600 applications again that year totaling about $9 billion and their budget was $1 billion per year. And then in February of this year, we were notified of a grant award up to $3 million. September 8th was the FAA draft grant agreement and of course, all that now is history because of what happened today. So we have the grant in place. So just a reminder, we submitted that form in March. I think the required date was March the 28th, so we submitted two days early. We got notification on July the 7th. So it fit in with our plan of bidding the project because we bid the lighting vault in March, the end of March, and then the terminal building in April the 21st. And we asked our contractors submitting to hold their bids for 120 days. And the reason we asked them to do that is because of the time it takes to get these grants in place. So we don't want to end up giving the contractor notice perceived without knowing we actually have the grant. It was challenging at the time when we were bidding this project because of course, y'all all remember, supply chains were broken, materials, some of the quotes I was hearing back from, in fact, our contractor, Haco, that's here, they even told me and other contractors, some of their suppliers wouldn't hold their quotes to them for some, in some cases, more than a week at that time. But yet they were being expected to hold their costs of their bids for 120 days. So there was a discussion within that bidding process that covered the possibility of escalations. And the position that the county took was that they would entertain those escalations based on justification and they would have to review that to see if they agree with justification and so forth and so on. But we did not get the grant when we wanted it and so that is why the terminal building, no work has been done. Haco, the contractor that was the lowest responsive bidder, has been very patient and that's why we, now that we have this grant, if it is the desire of this body, we'd like to move forward with that. Just a few other dates, the lighting vault grant agreement was executed in July of last. Just a few other dates, the lighting vault grant agreement was executed in July of last year, the, the vault and terminal building contractor contracts were executed in August of last year, the lighting vault and terminal building SCAC, which stands for South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, a grant agreement was executed in August of last year, and the terminal building BIL, which stands for bipartisan infrastructure law, AIG stands for Airport Infrastructure Grant Agreement, was executed in September of last year. So there's been some cost changes that have, have occurred since, since the contract was awarded, and we've, we have, there's a, there's some other information that were, that were fairly minor costs, but we picked out some of the bigger ones, and you see them there before you. So the 14,000, actually for, I believe that's for the construction, was the construction estimate based on the changes to the roof design, which included the addition of several gutters, the extension of that TPO roof, and, and a larger diameter pipe for the internal drainage system. But we have some concepts for that, and we're going to give those to the contractor once we get notice to proceed for an actual amount. So that's an estimate, that roof drainage. Duke Power Line, we just got notified last month, I think it was August the 28th, that their cost to bore and place the conduit in for our power is 132,229. And one of the reasons it's so high is because it's going underneath the creek. If you, any of you that have been out to the airport, as you go Airport Boulevard, you go down, you go down a hill, cross a bridge, and back up, there's a creek that runs down through there, and this has to be bored underneath the creek. So that's their number.
Was this not a part of the original?
No, sir.
Why was it not put in originally if we knew we were going to have to upgrade the power?
We, we didn't know what the cost would be until August.
How would we get power to the existing?
And so this is three-phase power that, that we're having run, and it's coming from, I don't remember the name of the-
Now, why do we have to have three-phase power? Is this in the terminal?
Yes, sir, and for the whole, for the whole airport. So this will be for your future hangars as well. So they were, we were provided that cost. We have everything in the lighting vault, which is now in place. Everything's complete for that particular project except for this Duke power line coming in there.
Can we go back to this again? Because was this not anticipated, or we did not get pricing on it?
It was not.
If not, why did we not get pricing on it when we were doing all the other pricing to know what the cost would be?
We were coordinating with Duke Power, and we didn't, until August, we didn't know if there would be additional costs, and if so, what the magnitude of those costs would be. It's not included in our bid documents because we didn't know there was going to be a cost.
But we knew it was going to be there.
They can't go, we can't put power poles around there? Is that illegal? It'll be cheaper to put it above ground than it would. Overhead service.
Right. I'll have to get back to you. I'll have to get back to you.
I mean, this, we, we've gone to over $7 million on the terminal, and I've, I've been all for it, but I, I gotta do some thinking.
Okay. I'll get you an answer about the overhead on three-phase power. Then, when I was working with the FAA, any other questions? Sorry. Okay. When I was working with the FAA regarding this ATP Airport Terminal Program grant that we got for 2.29, I suggested to them that the construction phase services should be a component of this, and they gave it some thought and came back and said yes. So I went back to the county and said, before we found out there was any, any of that funding would be available for Lancaster County, we put in what we would call a bare bones estimate for construction inspection and construction administration. So what we were doing is a 14-month project for construction. We had seven months in there of full-time inspection, and then the other seven months would be one day a week. So the intent was to lower the cost to the county and hope that that part-time inspection and construction phase services would cover it, and we wouldn't have any issues. But when we found out that the grant, that the FAA would participate, a portion of that, the county said, yes, let's, let's include that in the application, which we had to create a, a new scope of work and a fee, and we, we made that a part of that grant Contractor and subcontractor escalations, we're looking at, this is an estimate, the project manager, Gus Smith, and the gentleman beside him is Travis Hayes, he's owner of Haco Construction. He's in the process of getting those finalized now with the justification that will come to the county for review. So that's an estimate for right now. And then the potential enhanced state funding. What happened there was, as you recall, we got a $500,000 grant from the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission for the terminal building. What that is, is it's a 50-50 grant, you have to match it 50%. The estate will go up to 500,000, that's the maximum. So we were able to get 500,000 from the state. After, when we went through the effort, and there were four different submissions on this ATP grant, we had to break things up and group them a certain way to justify, to get the FAA to bow off on what we were asking, and it presented us with some information. So I met with the director of the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, and actually he came over to our office, we laid everything out on the table, and I just said, his name's Gary Siegfried, I said, Gary, given that we've break, broken this all apart now, and we've got our terminal costs separated from what we call ancillary improvements clearly set apart, both graphically as well as cost-wise, I wanted to see if there's any other opportunity for state funding. And so as we went down through it line by line, we identified that some of that ancillary, some of the ancillary improvement costs, they would, they would consider those eligible. And he asked me to pull together a spreadsheet, which I guess I'll show you now. And it's a lot of information, I don't know if you can even see, I guess you have hard copies of that. But everything that is showing there is highlighted in green, with the exception of that one change order where you see, if you, you see the column heading that says AIP entitlement funding, and it shows up at 200, excuse me, 2,481, that's for a change order for the vault, which the, that's eligible for FAA participation. Outside of that, all the other green, the cells that are highlighted in green are costs that the state said that they felt were eligible. So we're to meet with the state in October because they've hired or replaced their engineer for the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. They want him to be at work in, in that meeting with us. So he won't be there until October, so we're going to meet around the 1st of October. The Aeronautics Commission meets every other month. Their last meeting was in August, so their next meeting should be in October. But what I'm hearing is the October date does not work for several of the commissioners, they won't have a quorum, so they're talking about November. So if we meet in October, that'll give us enough time to make any adjustments that may come up from our meeting with staff, and then we'll prepare a state grant application for whatever the end result is. Take that before county, excuse me, before the Aeronautics Commission, and it's, it's up to the Aeronautics Commissioners to vote up or down. I can go into this in detail if you'd like, or you just want to ask questions about anything before I move on, or we can come-
I do can.
Yes, ma'am.
The numbers that are highlighted in green, do you have a total of those? Or where do I look for the total of a possible?
Okay. Good, good question. You see right here, potential enhanced state funding, 603,000 is our estimate.
That's what the green highlight adds up to?
Yes, ma'am, except the only thing that is not included in that number is that one line that says change order is under the lighting vault and associated site work. It's that second group of items. You see, you see the green up there under AIP entitlement funding of 2,000. If you go all the way across, the state funding that's showing up there is not showing up in all the green up there in this 603029 because that's a different, so the, the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission has three types of projects they fund. One is a maintenance project, 7525, that doesn't apply to this project. The other is a terminal building project, which is 50% of the non-federal share, up to 500,000. And then the other is a capital improvement project, which is funded at 60% state, 40% local. That's what we're going after, is 60% of the total number you see up there. We'd, I'd have to go through each one of them to tell you, but-
Specific to Ms. McGriff, if you look at the next to last column where it says SCAC funding on the spreadsheet, the next to last column-
SC.
The AC funded at the top, at the top.
Uh huh.
If you go down that column and add up all those green boxes, that should add up to the 600 and-
And 3.
603,000, yeah. We've already gotten 500,000 from the SCAC, and then in November, we'll know if we'll get this additional funding.
Additional funding.
And this is just terminal, this isn't covering the-
Ken, I'm, I'm sorry. Can you walk me through how we got to the 1.2 million exactly? Like what, what are the numbers that add up to that?
That's the bulk of them right there. The 1.2-
No, 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 but can, can you tell me exactly how we get from 5,925,871 to 7,122,038?
Okay. So the 7,122, so back in, in January, we had the, the 5.9 million.
Right.
Okay. And you've seen the new cost now is 7.2.
Correct. There's a $1.2 million difference approximately.
If you add the 14, the 132, the 76, 940, the 188,000, and the 813, it gets you approximately there.
And the 813?
So what you're telling me, we, we have all this funding up here? We can write a check for 2.4 million dollars and get a terminal?
Go to the next slide. If you go to the next slide, there you go. There's the long and short of it.
I want to write a check for 2.43 million dollars. Can we get a terminal now? How much we gonna have to pay?
That is correct if we get the state funds, so that's what we won't know till November, and-
We get the 608 mil, 8,000.
That's right.
Oh, six, yes, from the state, additional state funding, but also, yeah, but that does include the cost escalations.
Yeah. Remember, we had put 3.5 in our budget, the bill, and then at, at, when we approved our budget in June, when I was not here, y'all took a million away and said, and I'm going to say it as it said, if any airport construction will need funding, then money will be taken from the fund balance. The million that you took away will be put back. I just want to remind council members that y'all did that while I was not here. Okay?
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to my question, because when I just did that math, it came out to 1.1 million, so there's 100,000 that seems to be missing. So can we just go through that again?
Ken, does that, does that, does that also reflect like a little bit of increase in architecture fees when we're doing the roof design?
We, we left out, remember me saying over here that that's not all the numbers, that it's the big ones, the big ticket items? If you need me to, I can't tell you right now, but I'll have to go through that spreadsheet to come up with exactly what the difference is.
Yeah, I, I would like to know exactly where these changes are coming from, and then, because I'm, and it's not a significant difference, but when I'm looking at the escalations that are being reflected in the spreadsheet that you showed in the next slide, there's a 77403, plus then I would imagine the 375.
Correct.
That comes down to 807903.
There's, there's, you see the escalation down there in that last grouping, terminal allowances? It's 5,260. You add those three numbers together, it should total-
The 813?
Yes.
That's, that's the difference that I'm looking at. Okay, so that's not highlighted, though. So that's not, okay, so that would be included as part of, should that be included as part of the highlights?
So the reason that is, you see where the, the legend at the bottom, it says estimated, and it's yellow?
Correct.
Okay. So the 77403 up at the top.
Yep.
I talked with the contractor, and they didn't have to break it apart like we did to get the grant. So the way they provided it to us is not broken apart. So what I asked them to do, and they're working on this now, is to give me a number, take that 770, because that's, would really cover both the terminal building and associated site work and the ancillary improvements in site work. Okay?
Correct.
So what I wanted them to do was break that apart for me, because then that becomes, you see where it's green across, if you follow the escalation, all the way to the state and local funding right there? The second from the bottom grouping?
Right.
There's nothing there because I need a number from them. So what they'll do is they'll take the 770, theoretically, take the 77403, they're going to give me a number for the terminal building, then they're going to give me a number for the ancillary improvements, and theoretically, those numbers will add up to 770. Now, the reason why I'm asking her to do that is because that's eligible for that 6040 state grant.
And it possibly could go up?
Yes. That's exactly right.
It possibly could go up.
Yes, ma'am.
Including that number.
That's correct.
Let me ask a procurement question. We, we signed a contract to build this building, correct? At that price, contractors requesting additional funds, escalation, I know we had the change order on roof stuff. What's the county's, if this council votes not to accept that, what's the consequences? I don't know if-
Can I add one thing?
Accept what?
To take into consideration.
If you, if you, there's not support to spend the extra million. I mean, I'm just hypothetic.
What, what extra million dollars that y'all took away in June?